I'd like to call this meeting of the town commander's board to order. And the adjournments stands as posted. We have two in here. We have a public hearing, information meeting, and then we have information room. And I would like to have a moment to accept our planner's notes and minutes.
Salute.
Second? I'm in favor. Very good. We will be proceeding in a few minutes with our public hearing and an update on the Rockledge project. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say or present? I'm getting a lot of blank looks.
Say, you presented what?
Anything on your mind?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing I want to bring up at all.
Back away from that microphone there. Just so you all know, we do have a zoning review committee that's been working very hard on dealing with some of the changes for the zoning law. Some corrections, things of that sort. If anyone has any thoughts, ideas, things in the zoning law they'd like to see looked at, potentially alter, change, please get those to us. You can probably drop them off with John Lotier, the town clerk. And our next meeting is May 6th. You can read right in here. It's not a public hearing, but you can sit and listen to us talk and make some thoughts of things that you'd like to see done too that maybe haven't been discussed yet. Tell me that clock is slow. It's slow.
It is slow.
I'm all in favor of the clock being slow.
Six thirty-two.
How about those minutes?
Yeah, you know, throw it out there. It's an honest tablet.
Okay. That's all I have to say about it. I don't really know anybody else.
No personal relationships, no? Well, let's see.
Is there a change in the zoning law regarding the soil?
No, it's being discussed.
It's still being discussed.
Yeah, it's definitely being discussed. They've put together as a stand-alone committee on zoning law rather than putting in anything else that could be federally vetted and come in and comment and put it through. Yeah, it's going to take a while. You know, if people have things that they'd like to see looked at, like to have changed whatever, you want to get it to us. We may have thought of it already, but we may not have. And so, you know, the more we have to work, the better. So, that's one of the things we're definitely looking at.
So, you know, this may come in a...
You'll have to go through a whole public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I do when I have a public hearing to start.
I would expect it before the fall.
Set up your list.
When do we expect a hearing back?
I have been told that Ray has now looked at and reviewed and knows their stormwater drainage. He's going to be informing that he's getting all that to us. I've thrown John lines and it's still waiting for release, to be released. So, it's out of our hands. It's nothing we can do up to this point. I have an official since we're far from the county clock, Captain Washington DC. So, we have our first public hearing, which involves an information meeting on the Rockledge project. Mr. Wabinski?
Okay. Mark Wabinski, representing Hudson Valley, Rhinebeck LLC, Rockledge. To go to sheet one, please. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting and discussion regarding this application is a few amendments that have been made to the site design project. And then also to discuss an application that the applicant has also made to the ZBA with regard to distribution of units on the parcels that are outlined for historic adaptive reuse. So, the basis of the site design is the same. The entrance is still here. The changes that have been made are the locations of clusters of units and also the connecting road with the units. If you recall, when we first came in, it was just a dead-end road compared to these two units located in the eastern portion of the property. It's now a through路road that handles the location of new clusters for the common unit units. So, those are the four unit clusters. And so, the one change that occurred in the location of these clusters and what it was driven by was the ability to now provide gravity sewer to all those units. And so, they were located, they pulled up this hill, right? Remember, the hill drops down through here from going to the west. So, they are now located in such a way that gravity sewer would be able to serve all the units. Versus the previous configuration was to have some pump stations that were required because those units were a little bit lower and what gravity sewer would allow. So, would be, you know, the water utilities still remain the same. It would still access all of the units. In this case, you know, the modified longer road configuration changes. But then, you know, sewer for all of these units would connect into existing gravity sewer and then ultimately down through here to the wastewater treatment facility. And then these two units, there's actually, there's a trail. You see this area right here. It's right along the, the one modification is there's a small trail that goes along through here, cuts back, comes down through here, and then connects into the existing gravity sewer line on the access road ends of the sewer treatment plant. So, the one minor change is there'll be a small amount of disturbance within the New York State D E C wetland adjacent area. Prior application just had disturbance in this location for the Army Corps of Wetlands that identify, you know, other jurisdiction of the town around that. Now, there's just a small portion through here that'll have disturbance in the D E C wetland. It's just an ideal location to grab gravity sewer all the way down here and connect into the existing sewer treatment plant. So, that's the, you know, that's the basis of the change now. This cluster of units here, you see that we, like, there was one down here. It was pulled up onto a hill here. And then we had two units clustered in here before. And now, in order to once again allow gravity flow, there now could be like an island through here separating these two units. And they're pushed a little bit further to the south. And so, that's basically the summary of the change for the location of those units. So, I said that, you know, my initial comments for this amended application would be, you know, alignment, roadway alignment, which we actually reduced some roadway in doing that. And then the same thing with clustering of the units. So, it's also a reduction in some disturbance area due to this consolidation. Also, related to this application is there was a discussion before of, you know, the adaptive reuses of lot number one and lot two. So, one, two here, lot three, just trying to check that. Lot three is still the, lot three is still the lot for the condominiums. So, recall, previous discussion we had with this board was, you know, a modification of this stone, you know, the stone structure here with a footprint that's shown on this plan. And this is on sheet one, to allow for four units to be located in this structure. And then also the adaptive reuse for lot number one, so this is lot two. Lot one was to be four units to be located in that structure in the manor house. So, Jim, if you could go to sheet two, please. So, you can see for sheet two, it's the same alignment, cluster layout as shown on sheet one. But what the difference is, is now that there will only be two units located in the stone building here and six units to be located in the manor house. And so, in order to do that, the applicant has made an application to the town zoning board of appeals to offer an area variance to have six of the units located on lot number one. You know, obviously, four are allowed here. So, it's just an application for six units to be located in that structure. All other, you know, proposals to the alignment and clusters remain the same. But I just wanted to be able to, you know, discuss this formally with the board. And we are actually on the agenda with the ZBA for this Wednesday to present this particular application to the ZBA.
Mark, the overall number is unchanged?
Overall number is unchanged. Still a total of thirty-six units total throughout the entire project. I also would note that we, I just received some correspondence today regarding, from Gary Lopman, regarding some of the discussion with regard to some of the irrigation numbers. And I think there was also, you know, items with regard to, you know, water supply demand calculations. And then item for discussion regarding short-term miracles. And then, I think a couple days ago, Gretchen had forwarded a comment letter from Mr. Weiner regarding traffic and some other items. With regard to traffic and other items and maybe the application to the ZBA, Matt Berukoff and George are here to answer any questions with that. Also regarding the questions with regard to irrigation, the landscape architect, Catherine Baywell, is also here to just discuss rationale with regard to development of irrigation numbers. I think ultimately, I think the best way to, you know, respond to both letters is in written form if the board feels that's appropriate. And, but, you know, we're here to, you know, discuss some of those items and then, you know, take back feedback, take some feedback, and I'll respond right into the board.
There are some questions about the water use that's got nothing to do with irrigation. About the additional supply unless they're in, so it's not really based on irrigation per se, but the overall use. Do you have any attention to whether you work?
Doesn't change. That number doesn't change. It was, you know, initially, there was a flow confirmation letter. And so, the flow confirmation letter is, that's under the jurisdiction of the Dutch county department of health. And so, that was, there was a flow confirmation issue, a letter issued for the previous application. And that may be two before when there was a, you know, when there was the country and component to it. And so, actually with the, just going directly to, you know, condominium units. And it's just, Dutch county health department looks at it as a bedroom count. And so, the number of bedrooms, there's a certain flow rationale that is allocated for each one of the bedrooms. And the same thing with any of the amenities that are associated with the project. So, that will be further detailed to the health department along with further discussion of the irrigation numbers.
Would that things like storage and pressure irrigation and, for instance, fire suppression and that sort of thing?
So, fire suppression, we've always maintained that that's going to be handled individually in each of the units. So, it'll be a combination for fire suppression storage for each one of the condo units that's being developed. And that'll be, excuse me?
What sort of storage do you want there? Below ground, above ground, or?
At this time, you know, it's preliminary discussion. It's been within the unit itself. It'll be, you know, maybe in a lower level of the, or maybe some of them will have crawl spaces or it'll be, you know, located somehow within the unit in order to accommodate that.
And so, is there going to be onsite storage at any time for to accommodate peak flows and so forth?
Absolutely. So, you know, the process is to first develop and confirm with the Dutch county health department the estimated water supply demands for the project. And so, that'll be domestic, in this case, irrigation. And then, once that's developed and approved by the health department, it'll also be in conjunction with further hydrogeologic investigation on the site to confirm that there's adequate source capacity for the water system. So, the local state health department requirement is that the project water supply be able to meet average daily demand without, with the largest flow out of service.
Okay. For how many days? One day?
One day.
One day. And what form do you expect that storage to take?
So, it'll be, at this time, that's still under consideration. But at this time, it would be on-ground storage. And so, it would be on-ground storage with, you know, possibly transmission lines with a storage tank and then small pumps to supply for domestic supply to each one of the units. But that still needs to be designed and developed.
I'll go ahead. Two questions. The roadway that you now removed roadway, one-way or two-way?
Two-way.
Two-way. And the footprints of the two existing buildings that you're potentially going to change the occupancy count, does the footprint change at all?
The only place the footprint changes would be is, so this is, this is sheet two. There are two units here. It's just this small area. See that small square or rectangle right there? So, that's what the two-unit alternative is. Jim, if you could flip back to the sheet one.
Yeah, you had an addition for four.
Right there. That is for four units, right there. Matt, would you like to?
Where's our main entrance at this point?
Excuse me?
Where's our main entrance at this point?
Main entrance is like there are two of us. Well, so, if you recall, Eric, so this is going to be the main entrance located on the north side of the property. So, currently, it's just an odd alignment, it's a skewed alignment into Acre Hook Road. So, now it'll be moved to the south bit for perpendicular access to Acre Hook Road. And then it'll sweep and then utilize an existing, this is an existing roadway that'll be modified to be town improvements with regard to with improvement, drainage, et cetera. And then here is also the existing entrance to the south that will remain. But it's only, once again, it is deficient in site distance. And so, it's going to be used as emergency access on the way.
How is that going to be recorded?
There'll be, you know, a gate located there. So, it's going to be for emergency access.
How would you access it in emergency?
Fire department will have a code or a key to get in. Okay. Jim, could you bring up the landscape sheet? And Kathleen, could you discuss that, please? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Baywell, landscape architect on the project. This sheet, this sheet, we're showing a number of green infrastructure options that we are considering for the study. Rain garden. A rain garden, which is a way to collect water off rooftops and small catchment areas and then retain it in naturally planted, small depressed areas and then let it infiltrate into the soil. Showing it here just in section. And a plan here. And this is a bioswale, which is another very gentle way to take a runoff. And we're discussing that for some parts of the paved areas to just take the runoff immediately without having to do things like culverts and other kinds of engineering. This is, you can't read it, but it is a proposed plant list. And this is a very native palette. The entire site is being planned. All proposed plantings will be from a native palette of plants that are already well adapted to the area. And then finally, another thought that we might deploy is water harvesting systems, catching runoff of rooftops. So, that's a first pass at some green infrastructure systems that we are considering. I don't want to get into any more about irrigation. So, as Mark said, we do plan to address the very thoughtful questions that are in this letter in written form. But I can mention a few things in general. One is that, as I said, we are doing a completely native palette throughout the site. And I can show you, actually, if I could give this. We already know that the plants that are living there successfully now are likely to continue to thrive without irrigation. So, that's, so in a practical way, that's one reason to use a native palette. But also, our native palette will enhance the entire site's biodiversity and habitat. The thing about irrigation is it's not desirable because when plants become dependent on irrigation, then they're less resilient to fluctuations in weather. So, we absolutely do not want irrigation. However, we do need it to establish the plants in the first season. And doing that, we can do it in a very economical way with very surgically implied drip irrigation. It's not vast amounts of spraying. It's very carefully applied, small amounts of water, just enough to get the plants established. So, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we're really talking about the most minimal amount of irrigation and just for one season. Now, that being said, there might be drought. And in cases of extreme drought, hopefully, our plants will have been well established. But we might consider a triage idea, whereas we might need a little bit of supplemental water to save things that might die. But otherwise, be kind of accepting of some dieback or decline of plants that can survive a drought and come back in another season. So, those are a couple of points. And then the final point, there's real concern about turf. Turf is a very thirsty kind of landscape. We're not proposing any turf. There may be areas in our mode and that kind of look like lawn, but they would just be natural native grasses that could be mowed. And so, that those areas could be used as a lawn, but it's not turf per se. So, I just wanted to make sure that's very clear. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. It was underscore underscore Rockledge was the folder and then the one file in there. I thought it would just come up top. It comes at the bottom, maybe? There it is. Yeah. Thank you. I just wanted to pull this up really quickly to show, this is some plant palettes we submitted previously. And the red boxes are just indicating the plants on our proposed palette that are already existing on-site. So, you can see that there's a large number of plants that are already existing on-site that we're just keep repeating and repeating. And then other plants that are not boxed out are, but they are appropriate natives and belong in these plant communities. So, that's just to give you a good sense of we're really sticking with what's on the ground because we know that works.
Could you give us some examples of some of these plants that you brought up?
There's corcus, a latina, an oak tree. There's a lot of viburnums. There's variety. Viburnum is a big category. And there's one that's very common on the site, Viburnum recomitum, which is a gorgeous plant that we probably want to use quite a bit. There's switch grasses, which is a really successful native grass and quite beautiful as well. And it survives really tough situations. That's one that probably just do fine in a drought and so that would be the ground cover. We're looking at also a lot of layering because when you do layering, you get, you maximize habitat potential. And then you also have the added benefit of screening in some places where we might want additional screening for some kinds of, you know, just sightlines. A layering effect will help with that. And it also will enhance the whole forest habitat. Because it's been a little bit depleted over time. And our palette will be replenishing the plant and making the plant, the site, and making the entire site much more species-rich, attracting more butterflies, birds, et cetera.
So, but is that inside? Is everything from grasses to?
Yes. Right now, so far, we're showing just preliminary palette. And then we would be building on that. We're showing some herbaceous plants that are good for woodland understories and then shrewds and smaller trees and then major trees.
And is this planting just for the disturbed areas or the?
It's throughout. We were focusing a lot on areas that are visible from the public way, from the road. So, certainly the entrances, because there is great disturbance going on there. We also looked very closely at the clusters and how those might be expressed with woodland plantings, but also allow, not just be woodland right up to the buildings, but be a little bit more garden-like, but still with a native palette. So, yeah, on that other sheet with all the red boxes, there's a number of target areas that I've shown there that showed a first pass at what we would. It's still showing recommended species, not necessarily the final design. Just want to make that clear there.
And what sort of maintenance do you expect?
So, maintenance would be pretty minimal. We would, of course, have to maintain them for the first year so they get well established and do all the sort of best practices of mulching and, you know, just kind of making sure that they're just planted in good holes with the right kind of nutrients. And then they should do pretty well. The soils there are good. The soils there should support the things we're proposing pretty well. Just not extreme drought. That's where it gets all bets are off, you know, and then you have to get a little more careful.
How about some of the deer fencing? Is that going to be required?
Deer fencing will be required in some parts, yeah, at least at the start, yeah. And then... And then, of course, selecting for things that are... We saw tons of deer today. There's just...
Do they go out there?
Yeah, they're out there. And I mean, there's strategies about while you allow them to, you feed them, I mean, allow them to eat certain amounts of, you know, vegetation and just...
Control them.
What's that?
Especially control them.
No, that's the thing, you can't really stop them. You have to sort of plan for it and accept that that's part of what you're dealing with. Yeah.
I guess I'd like to speak to materials that will be following to the planning board. So it would be complete development of the stormwater management plan for the project. So the plans right now that have been submitted include, you know, final grading for the roadways and there are some areas that have been identified for stormwater management areas. That will be completed and documents submitted to the town for their review and the town engineers to view for compliance of stormwater management. Secondly, we expect that the report for the wastewater treatment, evaluation of wastewater treatment plant will be complete and that we will hopefully, we will have that and provide some additional insight to improvements that are being proposed with regard to wastewater treatment. Schematically, both the water supply and the sanitary disposal or sewer locations will be shown on the accompanying plans. Same thing with regard to hydrogeologic. Ready to get going on investigation for the new well, drilling the new well, evaluation of that. And then that will also, depending on the timing and the outcome of the investigation for the water supply, will lead ultimately into the design of the water system. Grab that, Eric, if you have a question.
Do you have a location of the new well yet or that hasn't been done?
We actually have four or five proposed locations that were recommended in the initial hydrogeologic study. If you recall, the existing wells were untested for yield on site. And then at that time, based on that and geology of the site, the hydrogeologic firm recommended multiple locations for looking for additional source capacity.
Are you sure we're looking at the one on the line?
That would be the hope, that we'd like to do one, but there's multiple locations. It all depends on what the yield is for the new well.
And what's the separation?
Various separations are required. It's not only, so obviously wells are placed so that they do not influence the wells on site or adjacent wells. And then wells are also located on the property to respect the infrastructure that's being developed. Health department has requirements for separation to stormwater management areas, water, not water lines, sewer lines, utilities, et cetera. So there's multiple separation requirements required for the location of the well relative to, like I said, other wells for source capacity on site and off site and also infrastructure. And then finally, with submission of these materials, I know there's been some discussion in regard to traffic related to the site, so would be, I guess, expecting some review from the town to comment on the traffic. Documents that have been submitted along with what I mentioned to the stormwater management documents and any other infrastructure and landscaping that'll be developed from the site.
Yeah, Mark, on the roadways on the property, are any of them going to be turned over to the town at completion of the project or is it going to remain private from the public road?
All private roads. And I would note that we've tried to utilize as many existing roads on the site. You know, I mentioned that this is all existing. This part is existing, we just cut a new section in through here. This would be a new piece through here, but this is, this section is existing, there's a section here that is also existing. This is new. So we've tried to utilize as much as the exist, I mean, this is paved, paved through here and then obviously this is paved through here. But, you know, the rest are, there's a pretty decent gravel base, at least there's a base there to utilize. So we're trying to, you know, minimize the amount of disturbance and increase in impervious area that we're developing on the property.
Then also private, that'll be privately contracted by the developer?
It's all private.
And the roads, as you're showing them on that, are they presently flagged on the map in those condo sites?
So that, I guess that would be another thing, would be to set up a site visit planning board. So I have the previous, I have the previous clusters marked, so I need to remove those stakes and locate, these two are pretty close to what we had before. Actually, they're very close, what we had before. This is different. I think this one's close and then these three here, well, these two here are obviously different. So I would, you know, I previously I state the, I just made rectangles out of these and state boxes so everybody could walk around and see, but I'll do that along with this road network through here and also a road through here. I'll state that and I guess, you know, look to the planning board for guidance for, you know, site visit.
Mark, there's some discussion about passing the off-road trail of some sort for people walking, that sort of.
Okay. So Kathleen, can you come back to this? So we've looked at, so looked at just the property line, this, looked at this entire section through here, Jim, if you could slide it, yeah, it goes all the way and, you know, look to here, it's not too much frontage on Acrohook Extension or on Primrose. Didn't look on Primrose, so I thought the main thing was, you know, the majority of the frontage through here. And so I asked, you know, since Kathleen was here today, to certainly look for some input in her eye on how to do some things, but it's generally, you know, there are sections that could accommodate that, but it's, you know, there's trying to, once again, minimize disturbance on the site and, you know, a lot of these areas are located in, you know, wetland adjacent areas. So, you know, I'll kind of, no, actually Kathleen, if you had some things, it would be helpful.
Yeah, we studied it to see if we could get a continuous line and at various portions of that, of that road, there's either wetlands or there's a very severe, did you point out that really severe?
Well, right here.
That curve, yeah, where the steep wall of earth comes up right to the edge. So that poses a challenge. We have a few thoughts about how we might deal with that, but we definitely, we need to study this a little bit more. It's challenging, yeah, so that's, but there's some idea, I mean, there's ways to maybe do a sun slightly grading, but it's, some vegetation removal, but...
It would just be, you know, in the form of a, maybe a woodship path and just, maybe removal of some small trees that offer, you know, access along certain sections. It's, there's not a lot of room without getting way off of the road. But, you know, like, for example, obviously here, I don't know if you remember, I mean, we had, I spoke to it with regard, you know, when I looked at providing access at this point, it required, you know, clearing through here because of this steep building, trees that were located through here. This is just a, you know, a difficult section to bring anything directly off the road without going onto the property in order to do that. So we're just trying to keep it as close to, as close to the, you know, existing road edge as possible. So is that something that the board would like to see?
I think it would say that might be very helpful, yeah.
How many people are confused here? Is it because of increased traffic, because you have a pedestrian athlete deciding or...
Well, it was just a, you know, it was a request made by the planning board with regard to, you know, some of the comments that have been made regarding the traffic, you know, the traffic being generated by the site. So the, you know, the applicant developer is trying to be respectful of that and, you know, just, and at the same time, make something that's practical and, you know, not invasive along, you know, along the frontage of the roadway.
These are going to be private roads or will they be available for the local neighbors to walk their dogs on, if they want to have less confrontation with traffic?
No.
Mark?
Good question with your board members.
So, you know, Mark, when it comes to the path, I think we'd like to see that, I think from my perspective, it's just a simple line understanding that obviously you're going to move it to try and minimize, you know, trees taken out. From my perspective, I don't need to see, you know, exactly what the line, just a general alignment understanding that's going to try and, you know, work hard to be...
Jim, does it need to be continuous?
We'd like it to be, I think, based on what we heard.
But I think...
To the best of the ability.
I'd love to have the site visit before. I think that'd be really, that'd be really helpful. You know, just not, not trying to, you know, prevent anything, it just, I would, you know, really welcome the input from the board on that.
I think that'd be good, because we all know, looking at a map and being in the field of different things. I'm really glad to see the naturalized stormwater management, green infrastructure. That's a really good thing to put on the plans. That's where we really want to head in the future, looking to do the more naturalized basis of things so we don't have to worry about maintenance and watering and things like that. The only other question I have is just, like a broken record, so lighting plans and lighting specs, as we get to that point, just making sure that we know what type of lights are on there, the cutoff lights, you know, those are required.
Absolutely. That will be included, you know, in development of each of the clusters and in all of the units, and actually the entire site. So we will provide a lighting plan, you know, that meets the requirements of town around it.
When you do the clusters, are all of the clusters going to be the same basic architectural style or is it going to be mixed or don't we know yet?
There's actually lots, you could probably speak to that better than I, but it is, it's not the same. There are, there's a, how many, how many, how many variations are there? There are eight variations.
Are any of them going to be visible from the road in the configuration?
So obviously, that one.
Plus, I mean, the new clusters.
New clusters? Visible from the road, from the road there. Yeah. You know, the, only maybe these?
Yeah.
Although this is, this is about 600 feet through woods through here. This is on Primrose through here. And so the idea is to mitigate some of this with some plantings that Kathleen had discussed in this area. So any of the new clusters, the answer is no, it's not in, they won't be visible.
Other than no.
Other than what?
Other than the ones you just pointed out.
Yeah, we're going to do some planting in here to mitigate that. There's, this is all, this is right at the, this, this right here, it's right at the edge of a wood line. You see that scallop line right there? It's right at the edge of woods, so from here to here is all woods. But I think it's about, I think it's about 500 feet total. And the thing about this section of woods, there's no understory. And so that would be, that would be the goal, you know, Kathleen can speak to that better than I, that would be the goal of mitigation through here.
Mark, there's also some one suggestion about trying to work with the town, the county about speed limits on actual road, going further. As thought, I mean, I realize that that's really not a decision that any of us can make in this room. I think it's probably county DOT and state involved as well, New York State DOT.
It is, I've done this before. So the current speed limit's 35 miles an hour, just looked at it today. So application would have to be made to Dutch County Department of Public Works and made forward to the New York State DOT.
I think in the Village, the speed limit is 30, I think most of the Village ride, I think, on Village roads. This is something...
Is that, is that something that the board wants us to look into?
Well, it's something that I think might be one of the things in terms of the traffic issues that have been raised by the state, might be something that would be helpful. Although I don't think we could make it a condition applicable because it's beyond our control through the state's determination, but I think it's something that would be probably a good idea to look into.
It is, but, you know, I'm trying to remember, because I did, a few years ago, I did the application. So it's both, you need to submit to the county and then the county makes recommendations to the state.
Remember all of the process, I'm just curious. I haven't gone through the process, but I've been in discussions. Do you remember all of the book? I mean, I'm sure it's not.
And, yeah, the one I did, I said the county would not.
I think it'll be based on how many accidents have occurred at that, you know, at the turns.
It's not strictly that, but, you know, the site lines, you know, and the, and the use of the roadway.
So if the roadway use, I mean, if the additional traffic would have some influence on the city?
You know, I can't speak to that. It's, it's been a while since I did that, you know, with an application. Right.
I guess at this point, I'd like to open this up to the public. Comments, questions? I think we're basically, nothing that the tiny group will still be waiting for is I believe the application to the CBA, they're going to be looking at that Wednesday night.
Right.
So until they accept the application, it's going to be Wednesday night, we would pretty much still be tied to the original application for the four, for the manor house and chapel. Once they accept the application, then the question becomes exactly how would the applicant by the planning board proceed? We can either proceed with what we know is permitted for four and four, or we could proceed with the six and two, recognizing that it would be dependent on the CBA approving the variance before any approval could be given.
Six and two?
We need to change that. Who doesn't? And we'll fill in after we get our decision from the CBA, but we proceed with the same one, but we're going to consider with alternatives now.
I believe we can do that.
I don't think it affects infrastructure at all. It's just, the only, the only change, I believe, is just the slipper.
I agree. As long as there are no other changes between the two, but they could tend to confuse the matter, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, members of the public, if you would come up to the microphone, please identify who you are, where you live, and we're going to have a quick three minutes, but we'll see you come back again as well. we're going to have a three minute interview. And we'll see you come back again as well.
We should only do one file on it. Hi, my name is David Weiner. I live at 306 Acro hook Road. I'm just about a six or eight minute walk north of, of entrance to this project. Are you finding it? Pardon, PowerPoint? Yes, PowerPoint. This must have already been. Hope it's arrived. There we go. Okay, so I don't really represent anybody except myself, but I think my use of the road is fairly representative. I might need to go to the next slide. I walk my dog. I bicycle. My wife and I go to walks on the road. The other thing that happens on the road is there are a lot of motorcyclists who use it. And the other thing that happens, and this isn't about traffic, because there are really two issues. Neighbors go from house to house and visit each other. And that has to do with the character of the community. The other thing is I'm just pleased that political candidates actually come and knock on the board. I was pleased to find that one of my school board members went to MIT. That was pretty impressive. So what do we see happening here? I've kind of been forced to try to figure out from the traffic studies, which were very good that the developer did. And I was really pleased that they responded to our concerns about whether these would be primary residents or basically vacation type rental owners. But even on Acro hook Road, you're still seeing, and especially if you take account of the fact that there's still some vacant land south of this property, there are about 100 acres where there could be development, that we could potentially get even under the current plans, almost two times, under the best assumptions, almost two times as much traffic as exists now, all the way up to close to three times. Let's go to the next one. I was pleased that there's been some discussion of that and I would really, I have contacted officials in the town and in the county and I definitely able to find out how I influence the traffic issues. And that's a big concern to me. And it seems to me in a county where we have, we're the sixth worst county in terms of per hundred thousand population that sends people to the emergency department from car accidents. The speed limit on Acro hook Road already doesn't make sense. And now they're talking about putting more traffic onto it. And just to give you a sense, the worst county has almost 1,200 accidents per hundred thousand. The best, meaning the one that has the best record has 303. We have 144 per hundred thousand. So we're not in good shape. Neither the county nor the town is paying attention to this. And it needs, that needs to happen. Let's look at the next slide. One of the things I want to point out, and this is not just about traffic, but it's partly traffic, is that as far as I can tell, this development is unprecedented in this town for dumping the amount of traffic from 36 units onto a country road. I'm not aware of any other situation in the town where that's happened. And if I'm wrong, I'd like to know about that. So this is really unprecedented, what's going on here. Okay, let's go to the next one. I think we've had it confirmed that this is going to be a private development. So we're going to now have 36 units in a community where currently we have single-family homes with individual driveways. You can go and knock on the door. I tend to, I canvass for candidates. I wouldn't be able to do that here. What kind of effect is that having on one art democracy? But just the entire rural character, friendly, neighborly character of our community. I think that's something that needs to be taken into account. And I think the community needs to be in some ways open to, to the community. Next question. The, I, I find it kind of ironic that in the recent election for mayor in this village, the mayor was talking about having a walkable, bikeable community. Now we're talking about making Acro hook Road less walkable, less bikeable. And what I've done is I've just tried to point out in the town code where there's actual discussion of protecting the world scenic, natural, historic character of the community, there's also refers to preventing gated residential development, which whether it says a gate or not, it's private. And we want to ensure that it's pedestrian friendly and we want to encourage tourism. Acro hook Road is frequently used by bike tourists and now we're making it very difficult to do that. I do appreciate the fact that these issues of, that people are noticing the issues arising from the questions that you've set. Let's skip to ahead. I've noticed the focus of the planning board is looking at disruptions of plants and the animals. I really would like to see more of a focus on the disruption to the neighbors to this project. I know that there is a habitat study and I really think we need to look at both the migratory and year-round species homo sapiens around the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak this evening?
Greenlee Gallo, Acro hook Road, three houses from Rock Village North. The clusters, I'm still not clear if they are multifamily dwellings or single-family houses within the cul-de-sac.
The zoning ordinance indicates that for multifamily housing in this zone, there is a provision for attached housing. So each cluster is four units, but the zoning ordinance requires that they be designed in a way so they retain the character of the single-family home. So I don't know that it helps, but each cluster is four residential dwellings.
So there will be four, so basically they're attached townhouses. Do we have schematics of them yet?
No, we're, we're, we're earlier than that in terms of the design stage. Still at site.
But they are multifamily attached. As far as, Mike, your comment about the speed limit, I think the burden is going to be on the town to enforce it because they sit at Burger Road and they skid over into Rose Hill. And if they want to sit in my driveway and do it, you're welcome to. But that's from By Road to the Rock Village area does tend to be the speed limit, the speedway because they're all going up the hill and the worst offender is the school bus. At a previous meeting, they talked about testing waterfall flow of the neighbors' wells. Is that going to happen? Okay, and how are the neighbors determined?
The hydrogeologist will make a determination of what wells to test and we will contact all the adjoining neighbors. We should actually well monitor during testing.
And will it be communicated to the neighbors whose wells are being tested?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak this evening?
I am Cara Keno, 47 Acro hook Road. I'm not particularly prepared this evening, but just some things that popped in mind listening to the presentation this evening. Still interested in knowing what the water quality is going to be of the discharge from the wastewater treatment plant in like, in total lateness terms, like should my dog be allowed in it? Can children play in it standpoint, since it runs through my backyard? And then I was curious, which lot is the chapel, are the chapel and the mansion on the same lot?
No.
Okay. So, so if, if the six units were allowed in the mansion, what could possibly be developed? Could the chapel property have additional things put on it at some point in the future? No, okay. And the dormitory building? Still interested in like which plans are.
That's not residential, that's.
And could that never be turned into residential?
The only way I can, we'll never say never. They would have to come before the planning board to try and get that done. But given the current density permitted on the property, unless the zoning law changed, it could not be done.
Okay, the way lots are laid out.
Well, in order to, density on the property or property that exists as they're proposing, it totally builds out what's allowed in the zoning law. So the zoning law itself would have to change to allow greater density on that property than is currently allowed.
Is the chapel the only building on its lot?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so that could conceivably have more units on it because it's five acres.
Actually, it could if we're going to get a variance basically transferred against it from that property, the manor house property.
Okay, thank you. And thank you very much for the attention this has been paid to the landscaping and the use of rainwater and things like that. That's really good to see. Listening, things are still solidifying with the Duchess County Woodsrunner Authority?
Yes.
And that's who's going to be presenting the final report that will be that you guys have all met.
Well, it's going to go with the Duchess County Department.
I think that is my, I'm sure this is, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else this evening?
Hi, I'm Robert Strickstein, Troy Drive, adjacent on the west side of the property. I think that the variance request is actually a good thing to make more use of the manor house. So I support that. I find the decision-making for me a little obscure. I'm not sure how the board proceeds. We've been, said we're going to put four units on the chapel. Changes, we're going to do four units here, but now instead of four units, here, we're going to only do two. So it won't be so big. It won't be so invasive. And we'll put the other two over here. But we don't know what big or invasive is because we've not seen anything. So I find this to be consistent. And I know we're still in cycling development. But again, the, in a similar vein, the irrigation plans for the landscaping are terrific. It's what you want to see, that kind of natural use of rainwater and, you know, collection pools and collection gardens. But we're not seeing any of it in context to this plan. Where are they going to be? We see a section of this building showing how this is going to work, but we don't know. Is that the wall or is the wall, it would be six times as high. So I encourage the board to be very cautious. I endorse this, this variance, but to be cautious because we don't know what it is that they're still saying is going to be smaller and whether it's smaller means smaller or it doesn't mean smaller. So I hope that's clear in what I'm trying to communicate. On the irrigation, in the paper submitted, it said that no permanent irrigation was going to be installed that would require, you know, the use of groundwater. But in the discussion today, you mentioned a drip irrigation system for when, you know, to emergencies or to establish the plantings, but would that be removed afterwards or how would that be? Please, thank you.
For the establishment period, that temporary irrigation would be for just that one season, it would be removed. And then in emergency situations, we wouldn't look at an irrigation system per se, but probably just a hose, something very temporary, just do quick hits of moisture in an extreme situation.
Thank you. Cara addressed, or someone addressed that the well tests were proceeding. That's something we're both concerned about as well. Kind of a very, going off a little bit, the plan represents that the housing, the homeowners association would have a recreation facility in a carriage house. And as a lot of our discussions about water, would that recreation facility present an additional water demand beyond reasonable, a couple of sinks, a couple of bathrooms, i.e. swimming pools, spas, anything like that? Does that in works?
It's meant to be a swimming pool outside, but it's filled up and it's.
So I'm going to give that a. I want to answer.
There is, in the initial, I think, you know, I mentioned before applications to help the partner for the bill confirmation letter. So that recreation facility, there was an accommodation for water demand in that.
To include a swimming pool, that's what.
A swimming pool and also outside of just, you know, other activities, bathrooms, things like that. So that's, that's considered the development of the water.
Is any of that showing in the video, like your swimming pool, like being ready for that? Not yet. Again, again, feel there's more specificity. I'd rather remain cautious and enthusiastic. Thank you.
I took a look before as well.
Who else this evening?
Hi, I'm Numeke Oleng. I live on 330 Perez Hill Road. I'd like to know if the new construction is going to be built on site or if like modular is going to be part of it?
Well, foundation, you are considering.
Can't hear.
He's had a question about whether it would be modular or sticked on site is still being discussed.
Can't hear the answer.
We can't hear the answer. That was the answer.
That's his answer.
Couldn't hear it.
You're looking for me?
Oh, okay.
Obviously foundations have to be built on site and we are considering using modular if it works out. And we prefer to do that, but we're not 100% sure that we can.
Okay, I would prefer something that was modular, I would prefer something modular that was less construction, going, less noise, less trucks. And my second question is, is there really be any consideration to like geothermal or solar panels or something like that?
The answer is yes. That's what I'm here for.
Anyone else that just speak this evening?
I have a question for Mark. Is there three-phase power available for this?
Good question. So I haven't looked at that. So, Mary?
So right here, right here, underground power that comes into the property. And I believe it's on single-phase power. So everything that, and I took a look, I just considered that for water supply. Whether or not that would, that would be a requirement for the water supply. Right now, I think that we could do it without bringing three-phase power. Because you'd have to run through probably from, you know, I haven't, I haven't completed the book, but you might have to run three phases up from, up from Rose Road, from Rose Hill.
Can you just do two words on what three-phase power means?
Three? One more phase, two more phases than a single phase.
Faces.
It's, to simplify, you know, depending on, you know, the service that's required. For typical.
For typical residents like yours, it's just, and that's what's along that road right now, is single-phase power. When you look up, it's only one wire up there. Three phases, three foot, three wires. And so some of the projects I've worked on recently, you know, the size of some of the residences or structures, and they are, they can, you can require for a single, for a single-family residence. It depends on the loads that are required for doing that. And so here, for just typical residential units, that, I don't think that'll be, it'll be necessary. And then I'm also, so I'm also looking and trying to design, in this case, you know, obviously the wastewater treatment facility is operated in single-phase power. And we'll try to do so with the same for the, for the water system. So the only, the only requirement, the only demand is the pumps. And so sizing the pumps properly so that we can just utilize the power that is, that is available to the site. So that is a, that's a consideration and a goal.
What brought it to my mind was that it comes that heat pumps for scale, is what you would be thinking?
Not necessarily with that, but what I found is on some of the geothermal projects that I'm working on, it's driving the pumps that have, that has driven up the, you know, the power requirements for a project.
Any other comments for the seat? Yes, sure.
So just to finish up that question, if three-phase power were needed, does that mean additional wires have to be added along after hook? Or it's the single to the development and then more power?
We have to investigate that essentially.
Okay. And then just please, in, when you can, come back with more details. I think we'd all be very interested in knowing more about the phasing development, like whether this is going to take a year or five years? And whether or not you are doing it in, you know, chunks or how you're, how you're approaching that? So we get a better idea of the impact on the, on the neighborhood. So that would, and, and we really are keen to have a full pack of details. Because it's hard to keep imagining, you know, some of these things and form a, form a real position on them. So we really appreciate the whole package, just if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess the question I want to ask now, we have the, we're being treated to public hearing. What would you like for time frame? Because we have, we have, we have been trying to pull together and put together and whatnot. Hopefully, I think we all share the desire to get as many details as we possibly can, the locations, all of those different sort of things. When do you feel that you'd be in a good position to come back before, for us and?
Well, we have brief discussion before and we're thinking, so the board needs twice in general.
Correct.
And so the second meeting will be June 15?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Okay. If it can be continued to the seventeenth, please.
I believe you can do that. Could I hear a motion? Could I hear a second? All in favor?
Alright.
Very good. Okay, we'll see you at 6:35 on June 17th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll do the same thing for the planning board, stick the units.
I'd like to find that, we definitely want to see greater detail, hopefully landscape is playing a role. Probes are going to be detailed. Sometimes when I leave, it's all kind of good, but looking at these areas, this is... I think so. And it makes more sense. Okay, our, our part two of tonight's program is presentation from Mr. Brunski on H2, Brindlewood and Te Court. If I got that right? Thank you. And I'd like, I'd also like the editor to show the den as we join the planning board. Take it away. Here's a little bit of space.
You know, we'll hold off on the, trying to start with, maybe a second sheet one. Okay, let's start with this. And so, actually, maybe if you go to next sheet. So this is, so I'm here for an application for, it's actually three properties. And so it starts with, you know, obviously with through the master plan, you know, consideration for just Astor Courts. And now, this particular application will be for two additional properties. To the north, it will be formerly Robert Duffy's property, which is now, the ownership is Te Court LLC. And then also property to the east, formerly Supercoast property, which is Brindle Valley LLC. And so each of the, each of the properties, it's all under different ownership. So there's three separate owners, only a single application. And then there's also another entity included in the application, which is Ferncliff Nursing Home. There. So I guess I should have been using the pointer.
I didn't submit.
Yeah, we can start with this because I'll, I'll just immediately go to the, to the second sheet. So this strip here and it, great. And then it, you know, property boundary goes up through here, comes back down. This is, this is the Astor Courts property here, along with, you know, what was transpiring along, on the west side of the tracks. So what I tried to do in sheet one was to just list all the, you know, the components of the master plan for Astor Courts that have been applied for and approvals been granted for the Astor Courts property. You know, there's the rooftop, patio, the solar, the pool, the powerhouse. There was some, there was some underground power that was located through here. There's a, a new entry and garden associated with that. Geothermal also was part of the approval near, you know, just a little bit to the north of the entry garden. There's a, on the, on the south side, in the west side of the tennis courts, there's a play lawn and stairs that were associated, that was, you know, approvals were, you know, application was made, approvals granted with regard to Astor Courts. Same thing with the powerhouse. You know, the restoration of the powerhouse and the roof and some of the improvements associated with that. And I mentioned underground removal of some of the overhead utilities on the property, on the Astor Courts property. And then having them go underground. Part of the master plan included, you know, miniature railroad on this, on this portion of the property. But no specific application was made for that, but it was, it was included in the master plan that was, you know, originally approved. Same thing in this area through here. There was a pump proposed in the, in the master plan application for Astor Courts. No individual application has been, has been made for that. So Jim, if you could switch to the, to your next sheet. So what I'll do is I'll just briefly, you know, just describe the, once again, the three parcels. But I think Howard Williams would go to some of the sheets that Howard submitted with Congress associates for the improvements that are being proposed. I think it'll be a little more clearer. This is just that I tried to provide an overall plan. Once again, it's, it's showing all three of the properties with some improvements being made to, I'm just going to say the three of the properties. And I'm always, I'm keeping Ferncliff also included in the, in the conversation because it's, you see this dash line through here. It's ultimately, you know, underground utilities. It's, it's a conversion of overhead utilities to underground utilities. So I was just trying to give a brief overview of what, of what the product, of what the project is, once again. You know, I'm saying three applicants, we're listing Ferncliff as a fourth applicant just because of this conversion of overhead, overhead utilities to underground. But I think, what I'd like to do is have Howard Williams start to go through, you know, what the, you know, the improvements are anticipated and to be considered as part of this master plan. And then both of us can jump in and have a discussion about each one of those improvements.
Okay, so with our client's purchase of both the T House and the Brindlewood, it's created new opportunities for some landscape improvements on each of the properties. But I think also, most importantly, it's created the opportunity to, to restore a bit of the original Astor, Ferncliff estate. Pretty good of the amount of T House and Astor Courts properties now contiguous in one form, ownership. So we're going to hear you describe are just a number of improvements in each one of them and then how we're trying to tie each of these three properties together. I'd like to start by just walking you in from, from River Road. With both the T House, the T House gives us the opportunity of entrance to the property now through the, this master, this triangle that I am here as part of the T House property with the use of the historic gate located here. We also have this, two entrances through Brindlebrook here currently, as well as our original Astor Courts entrance along the shared flag block. For, for usage, if you understand, with the two of these, they're both very different in character. If each of them has a particular problem, that's, that is the elephant in the room for us, Ferncliff. But it's a very large building, as you know, there's a lot of visibility of it from both driveways. And that's a major concern for our client. So the thinking is for the usage of both of these, these driveways, these major driveways, is the ownership, the residents of each of these two buildings would be the ones who use the narrow gate, the kind of smaller driveway entrance, which also has probably the most visibility of Ferncliff because it's, it's building that's right here. For everything else, that would be the, all service, all maintenance, and for, for the most part, gas, would be using the existing Astor Courts entrance. So really trying to direct most traffic this way. And that allows us, because of the, that driveway is running, it's steady through here, up through here, and then into the T House area. There's a lot of land for us to do some screening for it with along that route, much less so along the T House lane, as it's currently called particularly in this area. So with that decision to run most traffic through here, this would become a gated entrance. And with the existing entrances of Brindlebrook, we'd be having some difficult cyclines along River Road. That's a need for adopting some security measures for this property. The gate would occur just about in this area and a new driveway, the, the original, existing driveway to Brindlebrook, which runs around the south side of the pump, would be removed. And a new driveway taken off of the Astor Courts driveway at this point and run down to the front of the house here, where the small, that driveway that runs around to the existing pool. Those are the only real improvements to the Brindlebrook property, aside from the miniature turn which other two towards the end. But we're really leaving Brindlebrook mostly as it is. Obviously, some small garden work and landscaping done on that. But it's really just those driveways that are the parts of the application here. Running down the driveway, we have included in this application, it was originally in first approved application, this is service worth branching at this point. Running through the woods and that sits on the, the road, abandoned road that of the, of the original state roadway with a small bridge across the stream here and leading to the back of Astor Courts. In that previous application, there was a maintenance building planned for this area. We have, since the purchase of the T House property, there is a service building located here, it's existing. Our plan is to expand that area of a larger work yard and a second garage building located up here. That all will, that stretch of the driveway. Continuing up through the driveway, most, as I said, most traffic is coming up along through this way. This is the point, this is the magic moment for, for anyone who comes to the property. This is where you open up to all of the views across the estate, which is what, which is quite marvelous. We really want to enhance that as much as we can. There is existing along this property line, a lot of screening trees and fences that we're, we're going to separate the three properties. Our plan is to remove all of that. We would like to transplant all of those screening trees to our areas trying to, we're trying to screen Ferncliff. And so to really open it up for a long area between the two properties. Actually, can you, if you could go to my plans and the color versions, because that would be, yes. And go down to the next one. And go down to the next one. Yes, yes, this is, this is. So the, the existing T House building, existing swimming pool with gazebo. Currently, this is the parking area of the property with a driveway that runs through this area here. Our plan is to abandon both of those, remove them, shift the parking to the north of the house to create a garden area that's at the front of the house, not just simply to remove parking from immediately outside of better windows and front pass, but also to create a better connection from house to pool. So that involves removing the driveway that must appear and using what was a back driveway previous owners used. Adding a three bay garage to the existing small cottage that's here and a few service parking spots just in this area here. If you can go to the next. Just allow me, because turn goes a bit, but. So that's the, the garden area. Currently, there is a big part of the driveway that swings around to a basement garage and here. That will be removed as well since we no longer have the driveway running across the, it's no longer useful. So it'll just be a series of tining walls and stairs down to an entry at that basement area. We're also proposing adding more terraces to the rear of the back. Currently, there are just this little square portion and this square portion. So we're adding a stone terrace, larger, more useful one in the center part and expanding these two terraces out to the side here. So, yes, and also we need new paving around the swimming pools. Currently, it's a dry set paving with six inch piped grass joints between, between all the pavers, not very good for putting furniture on or, or even children playing around the pool. So that will be removed and we'll do an actual dry set pit, just can't let it be stone to cover, so it's contained to this type of surface. Then, then also includes putting a pergola down on this end of the pool, moving an existing outdoor kitchen that's here closer to the pergola and building a new pool safety fence around that area to incorporate. As currently, the safety fence runs across this area, we're going to incorporate using it into a pool. Can you go back one?
Howard, on this, I'm noticing a couple things. It says lawn for intended events or outdoor games and reinforced turf for home.
Yeah, yeah, these areas here, because, yeah. You know, the idea is that if they, if they are going to have an event with a few, more people than what, you know, the small parts of the terraces here come, there's got some room for this.
So this is for personal use?
Yes, this is for personal use. We're talking, the kinds of things that we're trying to plan for, they've heard already on Astor Courts in the past, there's been some events for the wedding, the land trust.
Planned Parenthood, scenic house.
Charitable, doesn't it?
Yes, yes.
That's it. It's not to be a wedding venue.
Well, just to give you clarification.
This one, where they would go, go back to the next. You know, go, go back actually. You could rotate this one too. This is one of the particular moments of connecting the properties that I was talking about, the original driveway for Ferncliff. You know, Graham mentioned this in this location ran past here through the woods here and straight to our front door of Astor Courts. We're going to restore that connection and remove the current driveway, certainly return that into more of a car path and walking path than the driveway. So that the main current approach to the Astor Courts building will be as it works historically. We're running it slightly off of, just to the, to the east of the original path was really right through this. We'd like to keep that as a pedestrian path and put the cars then closer to the, sort of the edge of the slope as it, as it stand still. We're also abandoning this section of driveway is so long as we are putting in the service driveway to the back of Astor Courts along here. This is no longer necessary, so this would be converted to a cart path as well. See, I'm here. Yes, the pond is still in the application. This is for the same configuration that we had previously. One addition to that is a small gazebo on this end.
Wasn't there a garden previously to be part of the pond?
The garden?
No, it was garden to just the, I guess.
Oh, but we're, yeah, we are leaving this now all as just as grass. It would be, there was, one of the Astor wives did have a garden in this location for a period of time. Our clients no longer interested in restoring that. There was, and there was still an interest in restoring the living garden, that's in this area here, just a small shaded garden with a number of sort of divot paths. If you could go back one more. The remaining item on here is the train. It probably is easier for you to see it on your sheets than to see it here. But the previous application had the train with a loop in this area coming along the departure of the existing river, River, and moving up into the woods. We're keeping as an option that loop up into the woods through this area, but we also want to extend it then into the Rindelbrook property that you can see it coming out of the woods for this area, or just a small loop. So this is a thousand feet additional track to connect the two properties. So this will involve, there's a train station on this end, there'll be a train station here as well for this part. Our client's been asking us, since we put these drawings together, for a couple more structures on this, which are more related to the trains as well, turntables, roundhouse to turn the trains. This involves destroying the trains and building and, and the possibility of a playhouse, which is a, in a way, a small structure, loosely based on the original, the form and detail of the original manor, Ferncliff manor house, but that would be a miniature form located adjacent to the train here.
So the train will traverse two parcels?
Yes.
There will be some agreements between the property owners and the, with the training and the tracks and the?
The Astor Courts won't be required with the.
And this is true with a potential reason to come in the Astor Courts driveway?
Yes, yes. I'm sure they'll come to an easy agreement on that.
Just to be clear, presently, there's no plan to purchase or lease.
I have heard no serious conversation about doing that.
Nobody said serious.
And the, previously there was a proposed pool at Astor Courts and that is now eliminated?
So actually, this is a good question we should, we should ask if you, because we weren't quite sure for what was already approved in the previous plan, that we need each of those to, to displace. The reason I ask that is they're, they're hesitating on this only because they purchased two properties which each have swimming pool and, you know.
But they're three separate.
And they didn't take it along very well. So, so, true, true. So this is, this is the discussion, is it worth putting the expense, you know, putting money into a swimming pool?
Well, this would suggest that that pool went away. I mean, as part of an application, since it's not detailed on here, I would interpret that to mean it went away.
Okay, so it seems like we should keep including it if we want to keep it on the table.
This will be the master plan, which the three properties are all part of it now. So this will be what we really expect of the, the different projects. I have a question about this. So maybe the hydrologic studies done about the site, the pond, sustainability, potential spoken back on storms, our storms seem to be a little bit more severe lately than they used to be. Hundred year floods and things seem to be coming in decades and whatnot. There is concern being the damage that's going to pass through our discretion, that it might be a wise idea to do a hydrological study in the area, the land, you know, the site of where it's going to be, the substrate, whatnot, and a potential impact for particularly downstream, people should, you know, certain events, curbs, you see, unfortunately, would be doing more commonly than used to be.
So would that be included as part of this application or?
I think it's part of the master plan here, but we'd like to see a good job, just look at that on the area.
So would, just provide some detail of what's included, construction and obviously look at the hydrology of the area.
Yeah, I think Jim can talk to you specifically about what we've been looking for.
Sure.
Thank you, Jim.
This is the planner, I can get it done as a hydrologist.
There are, there is information and pictures, a lot of things about the flooding issues.
I saw them.
I know you did, so I just wanted to be sure that you're aware of that. That would be helpful.
Very helpful.
So wouldn't that be in the phase, you know, which presenting the master, would you like everything else we did and bring back?
This is a very significant element, I think, and, you know, I think we would really like to get a handle on that. And I think with the applicant as well, there are other things they may choose to do instead, who knows? But I think this is a very significant, because it could have offset impacts, whereas everything else you're doing pretty much is going to be, I think, restricted for the properties under the three owners and the three duties.
It's not just fun, it's the stream as well.
Yeah, well, yes. There will be a SEBU review as well and therefore, from a segmentation standpoint, any significant or major element of the master plans may need to be considered at this time.
Well, we would, and so if you, when you look at the EA, you know, because they're two separate, they're two separate, they're separated, the stream remains separate from the pond, so they're independent. Obviously, under flooding conditions, they're all one. So, fine, we can, we can certainly detail that information if we want to, if it's part of the application.
Very much appreciated.
Sure.
So nothing going, going forward with the building house or the road?
That's moving forward.
All right, but not on the master plan yet?
No, that was part of it, so that was approved on the master plan for Astor Courts. So there, there actually is an application going into OGS for crossing, crossing the tracks with a, with a walkway, elevated walkway. And I actually prepared a plan to OGS for their review for acquisition property for both houses, for both us.
So that, that property is not currently part of this parcel?
Actually, so, so to, so if it's approval of the master plan, it will be shown, it will be shown on the.
That should be included.
It's included because that application is ongoing right now.
And those items, I think, you know, hatch and recall them somehow to differentiate that those have already been part of the previous, and not.
Right.
Use, since it's what we're talking about.
Yeah, so, so I tried to do that with the two sheets and, you know, I think scale, I think I need to change the scale a little bit so, so it's, it's more clear. And then, you know, just provide an overlap between that first sheet that I prepared and what Howard has here. And I tried to mirror what Howard had on his sheets on my second sheet, but I'll, I'll do a better job of that, maybe itemize everything listed and so it's, so it's very clear what's, what's ongoing, that we still want to be included in the same, and then what the, what the proposal now includes for the, we'll just say the three properties plus Ferncliff for the underground utilities.
Is this going to be the extent of the properties that you know or are they planning on purchasing more of this?
This is the extent that we know and agree with.
We do not want to start to overcan.
We didn't even know this was happening.
So.
And then of course, there was the Louisiana Purchase, so it's going west. I have questions for, for Michael and his crew here. I do have a procedural resolution for us to accept this application at this time for the master plan, so if we begin the whole process of receipt or whatnot, if we all agree it and then if we feel that this is a big deal, this is timely, what's happening, we can be taking another kind of approval. The calendar, the tiny board here by access follows on the application by KPHG Management LLC, T Court LLC, Rindelbell LLC, Rindelbrook Home, CL, for sightline approval, town code chapter 125, section 125, 72, 12820, district of the medical water company, realization of the opportunity to structure that, and okay, going, see it wrote for now, script. On the acceptance of master plan, explains Astor's system, we're initiating review by the planning officers and public. Your passing on the proposed actions of type management under secret with the full GA has been completed. We will schedule a public hearing on the master plan for June 3rd at.
June 17th.
June 17th at.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
Ten minutes in between.
And direct, otherwise caused, the notice and appointment here, Astor Courts, pardon, sent forth to the town code chapter 125, section 125, 72 and 125, 65 respectively. The delegate, many board members, do you want to have everyone take a look at this?
I think so.
Because of this, it's what's going on, you know, if it sort of, you know, do a mass.
Do you think so?
Of course.
Yeah, I, we also need our clerk.
That is going to be.
What we will do is, Richard and I will get together, figure out some way of getting it around the same page, so if you have the time for us to get up there and we can take a look.
Yeah, because it's also, we'd like to be able to somehow delineate some of the improvements. You know, like for example, the miniature rail and then also, you know, some of the structures that'll, that'll be added. Just need a little bit of time to do that. The underground utilities, that's pretty, you know, it's a long roadways that I can, I can simply walk, maybe, maybe put some flags through there, but that's, that's fairly easy, but we're going to need a little bit of time to, to walk, and, and walk through the properties.
May I, may I suggest that we invite Roger Paskin?
Oh, that's.
To attend as well, next one, getting a look at the property right up front.
Mark, the buried three phase power, that's along the same route that we talked about?
No, we're changing it. If you want, I could discuss that. We're changing the three phase power to go along the existing driveway.
Which existing driveway?
The, the existing driveway that.
For the Astor Courts.
For Astor Courts.
And the one that Duppies tees off.
Yeah, where it tees off because it's the least amount, once again, all the overhead goes away and it's the least amount of disturbance to the site to go along the existing driveway. And so the three phase, which is run and serve, serve Astor Courts, once again, the geothermal drove, drove the, the partner for three phase to Astor Courts. And then, and then, and then the addition will, to the T House, and as we approved before, just removal of a couple poles in connection to their existing underground at, for, for T House. And then the same thing as you, as you go to the east where we, where the main gate, Howard mentioned, the main gate for all the properties, there'll also be a single phase line, it's either a single phase or three phase that's going to go to Rindelbrook. And there's a, you know, existing generator, there's an existing service there now. So there'll be single phase going to that with a, with a single phase line going back to the gate to operate the gate, telecommunications there. But the whole goal of doing that and had a meeting, an initial meeting with Central Hudson to minimize the amount of disturbance to the site, rather than trying to go with the direction we were going before, Eric. So it's just going down the driveways and just being able to work off the driveways.
All right, and is that going to be buried all the way from River Road all the way down that driveway?
that driveway? All the way from River Road, everything's going to be underground on all the properties. And so that... How's it getting up to Annie Leverwood's and to... It's already, it's already there. Oh, that's already there? Yeah, because that was on another project that I did, remember we... Yeah, no, that's already been done though? That's done, that's done and complete, there's grass growing. And the geothermal's in operation, I've heard.
All righty. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, referring to the master plan, the Conservation Advisory Board, review and review time concerning environmental factors. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 118, Water Consistency Review, review of the early master plan, Water Advisor Committee, review of the time concerning consistency of the LWRP. In accordance with Justice Department of Plan Development, G39, Planning Zone of Effort, refer to the master plan, the Justice Department of Planning and Development, review. Refer to the master plan to the town's story, review and comment. Before the allocation to New York State's Historic Preservation Office, review and comment. Authorized without prejudice to any information accompanying the medical commentary made arise based on both the site and site visit in the throes. Preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on June 17, or estimate later time. Could our motion to approve?
Go on.
Second, Tom, please.
Hi.
Very good. So we'll get the judge to do about, is it?
Okay. I do have a question from the board, just a curiosity question. I had noted the screening trees that are between the T House and Astor Courts. Would it be possible for us to be doing some of the transplants for that at this point in time, so long as we are within the properties and outside of the areas, and moving those trees? Or is that something that you feel should be a full part of the master plan in this way?
This is based basically on the season, as opposed to...
Right, we'd like to use the time of the spring to get some of them moved. We can't do all of them at one time.
Where do we move them?
Mostly it's going to be, well, I can go up.
I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, there's areas for screening along here, along this area, up in here to take care of some of the...
To my view, that's a very reasonable question.
So I think here, that's about it, I think, which was, you have the, so, you know, if no one has an objection to that, I think we should hopefully do that.
I have a quick question, then. Are you going to then just transplant the soil from the holes of the existing tree, from where it's going to be put in, or...
Yeah, depending on the size of the tree, we'll either use a tree spade to do this, which takes all of the soil around the root off, or if it's, you know, about a certain caliber inch and, you know, width of canopy, we'll log more of that than with them, so...
But then you'll take the soil from the new hole and put it back in there, or you're not going to have enough soil to fill those holes?
Yeah, I mean, yes, would be the answer to that, because it's a, it's a long time.
Should be.
So, I haven't thought through them much, but yes, let's hope.
I mean, is, do we have that thing, that the volume of how many cubic yards of earth get moved that comes to play here?
I don't think that it necessarily does, given that there's not any regrading going on, anything like that.
Okay.
The gradings remain the same.
But they are transplanting the soil as well?
Well, they're transplanting it, but they're not regrading or doing any changes such as that. And they need, in fact, after bringing a few truckloads of topsoil, and just, you know, as things come down.
Well, the skeleton, then.
Exactly, so you may have to bring in, you know, 20, 30 dozen to something like that. And that's part of your planning, planning project.
May I have your comment?
Yes, sir.
I have had the pleasure of wandering through this in some detail, and it's a very comprehensive piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a group effort, always. It's all, we appreciate it.
We're having a good friend with us.
I like the colored prints, it keeps our interest.
Yeah, but we try.
So, I think that our set, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is that it?
Thank you.
On paper, very good, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.